...investing pension money for firefighters and for teachers. And they're saying, "Look, if you take away this tax incentive, it's going to hurt all of that."
That's private equity at work.
It is completely disingenuous. The truth is, the tax treatment for the private equity executive doesn't change the returns that a pension fund or somebody who invests with a private equity firm is going to be receiving. It's only going to impact how much money the private equity executive gets themselves at the end of the year. In other words, private equity firms are not going to suddenly have less incentive to turn a profit just because they get taxed on their salary like everybody else. And we're talking about such large quantities of money that private equity managers are still going to be paid extremely well. They would be taxed more on those huge payments, but their pay is still stratospherically high compared with everybody else.
Got it. So what happens next in this saga?
So the campaign by the private equity industry gets put to the test. And this happens in 2010. Under Obama, Democrats put forth a plan to try to close the carried interest loophole.
Okay.
And it actually passes the House.
Democrats, they're going to get rid of the carried interest loophole.
But as you would imagine, private equity goes into high gear and starts donating money left and right to senators and candidates across the country. And Democrats just can't get enough votes. They can't get 60 votes to get rid of this loophole.
So carried interest survives.
It survives, and actually survives a very long time before it becomes a political issue all over again. It becomes a political issue from the most unlikely place: Donald Trump.
Hmm. Well, one thing I do is get rid of carried interest, the one of the greatest provisions for people like me, to be honest with you.
During his 2016 campaign, he actually campaigns against the loophole.
I would change it to paying nothing, and it's ridiculous. The hedge fund guys are getting away with murder.
And he says that he is going to get rid of it if he gets in office.
That's very interesting, because of course Donald Trump, very famously, does not like to pay taxes.
It will be simple. It will be easy. It will be fair. Some of the very unfair deductions that certain people have been given who make a lot of money will not be available any longer.
And of course, he gets elected into office.
Got it. So we're in a familiar place, on the cusp of Congress getting rid of the carried interest tax loophole.
Right. And it's like déjà vu all over again. Now, the private equity industry goes into overdrive. They fight, they fight, they lobby and lobby, and eventually they win. There was a small tweak that was made to it, but really just a watered-down tweak, but it essentially survives intact. And this was a big disappointment to politicians and a lot of Americans on both sides of the aisle who thought that this was the moment that this loophole would finally die.
Which I think Andrew brings us to today and what happened with Senator Sinema. She single-handedly kills the latest effort to close this tax loophole. And what is her argument for doing that when she does it last week?
She basically adopts the talking points of the private equity industry. She says that eliminating carried interest would hurt the small businesses that she represents in Arizona. She thinks it's going to hurt job growth. She praises the private equity industry for its investments in her state.
Okay, so I have to ask, how much money has Senator Sinema gotten from private equity firms and trade groups?
A lot. So the industry is some of her biggest donors. And by the way, there are not a lot of private equity firms that are based in Arizona.
Right.
So these are private equity executives that are in New York that are paying her money. And in fact, the Associated Press just put out a report showing that she received $983,000, almost a million dollars, just since last summer from the private equity industry.
Right. And she delivered. So Andrew, for the foreseeable future, this loophole looks like it's saved. And so private equity managers will go on making millions of dollars a year, in some cases, tens or hundreds of millions of dollars a year, that are taxed at this much lower rate and a way that almost everybody agrees is not fair. So I'm curious what you think will be the long-term consequence of that and of this loophole being unkillable?
Well, look, there's the practical cost, which is that it's estimated that closing the loophole would bring in $14 billion over 10 years that could otherwise be used for social programs, education.
Right.
You name it. In many ways, though, there's an even bigger, almost philosophical implication, and that's about the damage that a loophole like this does to the basic sense of fairness in our country for many Americans.
Mm-hmm.
If you think of the tax code as a manifestation or demonstration of our values as a country, the idea that this loophole exists and is as big and gaping and galling as it is just creates even more distrust in the system. You know, the way the tax code's supposed to work, the wealthiest are supposed to pay the highest percentage of their income.
Right.
So when the wealthiest are paying less than most of us in taxes, it just creates an even greater sense that the system is rigged.
Well, Andrew, thank you very much.
It's great to be here, Michael. Thank you.
Andrew Ross Sorkin writes about finance for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by CrowdStreet, where thousands of investors are building their portfolios with real estate deals all online. For important disclosures, visit crowdstreet.com. And by Amazon Business. From small business to big enterprise and everything in between, Amazon Business helps simplify the supplies-buying process. Amazon Business, your partner for smart business buying. Get the story firsthand with The Daily, distributed by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com.
The Roanoke City Council regular session for August 15, 2022 is hereby called order. And please to recognize Deputy Clerk Mr. Seale Will tonight. Ms. Will, I ask you to call, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Best pitch.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call Mr. President. Tonight, our invocation will be delivered by Councilmember Stephanie Moon Reynolds. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. We please stand.
Ms. Reynolds.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, we come to you this evening praying for a sense of your presence, seeking your divine guidance, asking you to impart unto us the wisdom that is needed to undertake the business of our agenda. Let us be tolerant of the thoughts of others, for we never know in what voice you will speak. And let not the past ever be so dear to us as to set a limit on the future. In Christ's name, let all God's people say amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds, for the invocation. And welcome, everyone, tonight to our second session of today. All right, the first order of business, as I have, is that we're going to come out of closed session. So I want to ask someone on council to give me a motion to come out of closed session.
May I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified of the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. Just to know, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, but council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That means you can watch us all day if you miss anything. Come back and watch. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right. Tonight, second on our agenda is the presentations and acknowledgements. And there's a recognition of Angela J. Kew and Camille Tomrey, students visiting from Saint-Lô, France. And I'm going to call on Councilmember Cobb to introduce the students to us and present some gifts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lee and colleagues on council. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight Camille and Angela. And if you all would come up here. These two students are students in Saint-Lô, France, one of our sister cities. And we also have some other very distinguished guests in the crowd tonight. Our co-chairs of the Saint-Lô Sister City Committee, Anne Hackworth and Peggy Wells. And Peggy, this is your spouse?
Yes.
Hugh. And host families here tonight, the Bohannans are right here, they're hosting Angela. And the Hinshaws, and then my family right behind them, are hosting Camille. So I wanted to officially welcome you all here. I know that you each have prepared a few remarks that you'd like to share, so whoever wants to go first, welcome.
My name is Angela, and I'm going to tell you about my experience in Roanoke. We arrived in Roanoke on the 3rd after a rough day of travel. My host family has since shown me around Roanoke and its surroundings. Through this match, I had the opportunities to see many things, such as a musical, the D-Day Museum, ranches, and many trades. The museum experience was particularly interesting because coming from Normandy, I was able to study the D-Day landings many times. But I really enjoyed discovering the point of view of another country. In addition, the statues exposed in honor of the soldier were wonderful. As a writer, I love volunteering at Hilling Stride, this table that specializes in supporting people with disabilities. The staff and volunteers are very welcoming and helped me to adapt very quickly. I was also able to meet many people who offered me incredible opportunities. In particular, I had the chance to visit Virginia Tech, which is a great school for engineers here in the United States. I am starting my engineering studies in the fall, and I really appreciated the visit of this school. All the visits and the people I met are an experience I will not forget, so I would like to thank all the people who made this exchange possible, as well as the people I met for their kindness and hospitality.
It is a great pleasure to be here today to share at least some of our personal experiences that we get from our trip through the Roanoke Valley. So after a complicated trip to the last airport, we arrived in our family, who have been very welcoming to us. And the next day, I personally started my volunteer work at the Toma Museum, which made me meet some very interesting and nice people with whom I could exchange about our respective cultures and who made me leave some experiences that I would not have thought to know when I came here, such as assisting kids in their painting summer camp or helping people with intellectual disabilities visiting the museum. It was very enriching in human terms. I want to come back to our families and the people of the Sister City Committee, who welcomed us and drove us absolutely everywhere to show us as much as possible Roanoke and its surroundings, as if the gas was free. So thanks to Sherri and team for keeping me entertained these last two weeks. Leaving you was not so easy. And I won't be able to listen to the live music they keep me hearing. I also want to thank Anne and Bill across, who showed us some of the beautiful landscape of the valley from the mountain and its famous stars. And thanks to Peggy Wells for taking us to the D-Day Memorial in Bedford. Since we're from Normandy, it meant a big deal for us. And finally, thanks to John James for hosting me these last two weeks and allowing me to do this internship for the city, which I hope will improve my knowledge of the English language and the American culture. I could not have talked about everything, but I'm sure that I will have a lot of story to tell when I get back in France. Thank you.
So on behalf of the City of Roanoke, we want to welcome each of you and present you with just a small gift, a welcome gift from us. And I want to thank our Clerk's Office for making these possible. And any colleagues have anything you'd like to say?
Let me go to all members of the sister cities, Mr. Best pitch, for some words.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I am so happy that you found Roanoke to be a welcoming and friendly place during your stay here. And I say that because in 2019, my wife and I had the opportunity and the very great pleasure of visiting Saint-Lô, along with some of the people who are with us tonight. Anne Hackworth and Hugh and Peggy Wells were part of that group, along with several others. And the friendliest, most welcoming city you could ever want to visit is Saint-Lô, France. I hope that others will take advantage of that opportunity to visit any of our sister cities. But I just have to say, so far, Saint-Lô is the only one I've been able to actually visit. And we were hosted by Irene and Patrick Duval, who treated us almost like royalty. They were so kind and so generous with their time and everything else. And I always want to take the opportunity to say that the reason Saint-Lô is one of our sister cities is because after the Normandy invasion on D-Day, most of the men from our area who fought and went in on D-Day were in the 29th Infantry Division. And their next objective was to push the Nazis out of Saint-Lô. It's a very short distance. I think it's less than 20 miles. It took them 44 days to go that distance, fighting hedgerow to hedgerow to hedgerow. Many of them, of course, never came back. But the people of Saint-Lô have never forgotten, never forgotten, that Omaha Beach put them at the top of the list for the next objective. And they appreciate what the Americans did for them to restore their freedom and their democracy through all of France, of course, but especially in Saint-Lô. So thank you for coming and visiting us. I hope one day I'm going to get a chance to go back again, and maybe I'll be able to see you there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say welcome again, Angela Lee and Camille. And we are going to pray that your return is a lot smoother than your trip coming here. You both said it was pretty rough, so we'll just pray that you have an enjoyable stay here and that you have a really smooth, safe return home. Again, welcome to the city of Roanoke.
Thank you. I'm going right down the line here. I'm going to start with Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Based on what Mr. Best pitch just said, brought back memories when I had the opportunity to go to one of our other sister cities, when I had the pleasure of going to Wonju, Korea. And they too were very welcoming. And we had the opportunity to host one of the students who came over and stayed with my family. She should be 21 now. We celebrated her 15th birthday at my home because she was away from home, she was a little homesick. So I made it special for her. And to my memory now, she should be 21. But I want to say welcome, and I hope you all have enjoyed your stay, and you will have safe travels back home.
All right. Ms. Price?
Well, I'll just add my comments to say welcome to the star city of the South. And I hope you have enjoyed the great Southern hospitality here in our beautiful city. And it's always wonderful to have students to be able to have this opportunity to travel and learn abroad. And I must comment, as a former teacher myself, I want to compliment you on your beautiful English. I would dare say that I don't think you have very much more to improve upon it. So welcome again, and I also echo, safe travels and much better travels going back home. God bless you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Well, I just want to welcome you, and I also want to let you know that I had the pleasure of visiting Saint-Lô several years ago and also hosting three different people. And one of those is my son, Pierre Huni, and he has been here twice. So it is a pleasure to have you here and to find that Roanoke is a welcoming city, just like Normandy is. So thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, please say, if you see Madame Junin, say hello.
Well, let me say, on behalf of, as has been mentioned, we want to thank you all for coming over and visiting with us. Well, we're so pleased and we're so proud of our sister cities organization that it went through some turbulence here for a little while, but they're still focusing on it. And we thank a lot of that organization and visiting areas across the country. And Boardman McCob, who's on the Sister City Board, and Councilman Best pitch, who's traveled and been involved in that, and I'm just so proud of everybody and their commitment and proud of you all for taking the time to come. And we hope, again, as the Vice Mayor said, that your trip back won't be that tough. And one day, maybe I'll get there. Right now, I'm a train and Uber guy. If the train is going to get there, doesn't get there, I don't know. But we'll see. We'll see. But we're honored to have you with us. Thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing our ties with Saint-Lô. And the president came here, the mayor, the mayor came here a while back, and he was a gracious gentleman, and I really appreciate it. And so thank you all for all that you do, and be safe as you go back. Thank you. It'll be a long Uber drive, but remember. I'll tell you. The judge told, the judge told. All right. Thank you again, Ms. Call, Councilman Cobb.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go now to public hearings. We have a request of Carillion Medical Center to amend the institutional plan, unit development plan, as part of a previous rezoning for 1906 Bellevue Avenue Southeast, Old Jefferson Street Southwest, 2013 Jefferson Street Southwest, 2017 Jefferson Street Southwest, 2001 Crystal Spring Avenue Southwest, and 127 McClanahan Street Southwest, respectively, through the adoption of ordinance number 41623-111819 on November 18, 2019. Chris Burns is the agent for Blazer and Associates is the spokesperson. We have an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance regarding property located at 1906 Bellevue Avenue Southeast, 0 Jefferson Street Southwest, 2013 Jefferson Street Southwest, 2017 Jefferson Street Southwest, 127 McClanahan Street Southwest, and 2001 Crystal Spring Avenue Southwest, bearing official tax map numbers 4060301, 1041002, 1041004, 1041003, 1040902, and 1040905, respectively, by amending an institutional planned unit development plan and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval of this amendment. And at this time, is Mr. Burns here? Welcome, Mr. Burns. And I want to bring you up to give you an opportunity to make any comments, or you may just want to respond to any questions that council members may have.
I'm Marty Masico with Carillion Clinic. Chris Burns is here with the Ballers and Associates for any questions. We're excited about this rezoning, which would put a parking garage on the corner of Jefferson Street. And we think it has a great need for the new tower that's being built to afford very convenient parking for the community as well as our needs in the hospital. And we will certainly address any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing now. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Okay. Can you just call their name and they'll ask them?
Yes, sir.
numbers 4060301, 1041002, 1041004, 1041003, 1040902, and 1040905, respectively, by amending an institutional planned unit development plan and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval of this amendment. And at this time, is Mr. Burns here? Welcome, Mr. Burns. And I want to bring you up to give you an opportunity to make any comments, or you may just want to respond to any questions that council members may have. But.
I'm Marty Masico with Carillion Clinic. Chris Burns is here with the Ballzer and Associates for any questions. We're excited about this rezoning, which would put a parking garage on the corner of Jefferson Street. And we think it has a great need for the new tower that's being built to afford very convenient parking for the community as well as our needs in the hospital. And we will certainly address any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing now. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Okay. Can you just call their name and they'll ask?
Yes, sir. Irene Malakowski.
Welcome to council.
Hi, thank you.
Can you speak into that mic? Because I'm going to have a problem.
Yes, and I'm going to take off my mask. Okay. I'm Irene Malakowski. I'm at 2208 Jefferson Street in Roanoke. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for having me here. My intention today was to speak about enhancing the safe walkability of our neighborhood. We, Roanoke, and our neighborhood are growing, buying and dining locally. Our businesses are thriving, and soon we will have a boutique hotel with two new restaurants in South Roanoke. Then, of course, we have our ever-expanding Carillion neighbor, who anticipates thousands will come to receive medical hospital services. And I'm asking the city to be proactive, as was Carillion, who understood the need for the pedestrian safety and proposed a suspended walkable bridge, widening of Jefferson Street, and construction of a concrete island on Jefferson to provide pedestrian refuge. While the scope of this project has been reconfigured, however, the end project, we still know, will significantly increase regular traffic and pedestrian traffic for years to come, which is why I'm really excited to have found out about a week or so ago from Mr. Larkin, that the garage on McClanahan and Crystal Spring will be open to the public for free parking. And there's about 600 parking spaces, I think, in that building. So, yes, there is a great need for parking. So, I'm asking the city if you will continue to work on expanding the sidewalk plan to include additional sidewalks where there are none, to add more crosswalks and traffic signs, especially along Jefferson Street, Broadway, and McClanahan, which are the streets that many are directed to come through on their way to Carillion. Carillion's traffic study also lists Wycliffe, Carolina, and Roseland as mitigators of hospital traffic. Crystal Spring Elementary School is located on Carolina and Roseland, and surely we need to be concerned about the safety of our children who walk to and from school. We also need more sidewalks and crosswalks because the new garage will not have an entrance, I believe, on Jefferson, and it will be McClanahan, a ride-in and ride-out, as well as Crystal Spring. And the ride-in and ride-out directs people through the local streets in order to leave the area. So, with the, I think there's going to be well over 1,000 spaces, I think probably even 1,200 all told, with the garages that we currently have and the addition. So, there will be thousands of vehicles coming in and out of our neighborhood. And we all know that drivers are much more distracted than they have been in the past. I'm probably one of them, which is another reason why we need more crosswalks and traffic signs to alert drivers to stop for pedestrians at crosswalks. I don't believe we have enough of them, and people don't seem to know that that's the law. Or maybe they're just too distracted. Other people have spoken exhaustively about parking, and I think this, I really feel that more communication between the city, the businesses in our area, as well as the citizens, to utilize the parking that we do have, the legal parking that we have, and also, you know, the garages that will be available to us. And then I really wanted to speak a moment about the postponement of the behavioral health. I was quite disappointed, but I'm sure that I'm not as disappointed as those who work in the behavioral health field and those who need behavioral health care. We know that we need more inpatient and outpatient behavioral health services, and it's really important, especially for outpatient services, because in a community like ours, if we have more outpatient services, we can hopefully prevent a crisis that would require more intensive care. Anne Agee had stated in an interview with Becker's Hospital Review that we have five stories of behavioral health services, but it's an old building. And so, we've talked about whether we renovate or build new, and I really feel we need a new facility. And she went on to express in another interview that it was really important, she was talking to CEOs, and this one last thing she said in an interview, make your decision and have courage to stand by it. Make sure the board is with you, and then communicate, communicate, and communicate. And I think we need more reassurance as to how we move forward, since they're reducing the size of the building that we currently have, and now they're either looking for a new facility that can house, you know, the outpatient services, or maybe land to build. And that seems like a long time away. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Dear Mayor and members of City Council, I am Barbara Dirk. I'm president of Neighbors in South Roanoke. Neighbors in South Roanoke appreciates all, all that Carillion does to assist the neighborhood. For years, Carillion has been proactive in mitigating employee parking on neighborhood streets. I mean, they even hired somebody to come around to make sure that those employ, that the cars parking on our neighborhood streets didn't have Carillion parking stickers on them. So, we appreciate that. They facilitated Zoom meetings for the neighborhood and asked for, they've asked the neighborhood for input before the projects were presented for approval by the planning commission. The construction workers even turned our pegged leg sign into an active two-legged, wonderful neighborhood entrance way. Residents living in South Roanoke work at Carillion. The neighbors value the close proximity to the medical complex. The construction project is well-managed so not to impede local traffic, and the observation platform allows gawkers to watch the building process. Carillion has facilitated, again, Zoom meetings and has healed our neighborhood sign. The neighborhood acknowledges Carillion's role in Roanoke's identity. The Ironman competition and use of the parking garages by the community is an example of corporate citizenship. In 2021, we were interviewed on Channel 10 about the roundabout needs at McClanahan and Broadway. We contacted Mr. Best Pitch about that. While Carillion is an important economic engine for the valley, Carillion serves patients from all of southwest Virginia and the neighboring states. The city should support existing businesses in the Roanoke Valley that are expanding. Right now, you're encouraging other businesses to come here. We need to give, give support to the people that are here. We build industrial parks. What we need is to build a gateway entrance for Carillion so they, the community can acknowledge the importance for VTC Carillion and the Frayland Research Complex. Consider a dedicated entrance from 581 to the VTC Carillion-Frayland entrance. Carillion has expanded all up and down Frayland, Franklin Road, where in the old, they are in the old EuKrops Building, and now they're in Tanglewood Mall. Franklin Road is, is ready and waiting for Carillion to come in and hopefully become more green. We now have sidewalks and bike lanes. And I talked about the behavioral health building, it needs to be built in that area. The Veterans Administration Medical Complex needs to be built in this area. We need a thick tread of the medical industry in this, in this area. I would suggest that during site plan review, you consider a location for a VTC Carillion gateway. If it's the Wonju exit off of 581, the Roy Weber Highway is used, there should be additional VTC Carillion entrance ways. Traffic circles would encourage safety at Wonju Broadway, at Franklin Road, Broadway Avonham, and Broadway McClanahan. If another gateway entrance is identified by the city, it should enhance and reflect the importance of the VTC Carillion and Frayland Research Institute. I suggest that maybe you have a special exit off of 581 dedicated to this medical complex that we have in southwest city, in South Roanoke. I, I suggest that during site plan review, you consider the need for pedestrian access on Evans Mill Road, that the tunnel that goes under the railroad is right there, and we need to identify a Greenway connector from South Roanoke to Rivers Edge Park and to the Roanoke River Greenway. So, that's needed. During site plan review, you need to talk about other things too, and the best traffic flow from Evans Mill Road to back to Broadway. So, that's important. What I ask, bring my sign, bring my picture up, please, is, is that, that Carillion directional signs are installed, that during site plan review, we ask for a dedicated entrance off of 581 to connect the VTC Frayland campus. Acknowledge the value of the gateway entrance for Carillion. Carillion has invested in Roanoke, and Roanoke should invest in a gateway entrance for Carillion. And, and this is for you to see, this is coming off of Wonju. Now, this green space, we don't have much green space over there. We've got Pilates now instead of the pawn shop, which we appreciate, the Pilates versus the pawn shop, and then the old laundromat used to be over here. But what about putting a Carillion sign and say, if you want to go to VTC, turn that way, and if you want to go to, to the mall, turn here? But that's, this is, this is, this is just until we get the entrance off of 581, dedicated entrance. But we need to recognize Carillion for all that they've done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The other speaker, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, we will this time close the public hearing, and I will open the session up to my council colleagues if they have any questions or discussions or comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of comments. I just wanted to say the, the application from Carillion had a lot of good information in it. It was very explanatory. I like the policy action portion where they actually connected either, each of the policy actions with a part of the plan that was applicable to, to the plan, to the comprehensive plan, to the South Roanoke Neighborhood Plan, and to the Riverland Reallment Heels Plan. So, they made sure that they took each section of that policy in action and connected it to each section that was applicable. I will say that I would like for, for you all to consider everything that Ms. Malakowski said and Ms. Dirk said about the, the possible additions for, for the traffic. I know you've done the traffic study. We did see that in our package. But just to consider some of those improvements, improvements for the pedestrian walk, that might make a difference. And I know you guys probably can't answer the question about the behavioral health clinic, but, you know, I was sorry to hear that it has been postponed, but I certainly hope with, with the need that we have for behavioral health and all of the drug addictions, that hopefully that will be moving forward soon. It certainly has nothing to do with what we're doing here today, but I just wanted to say that I am too very disappointed that it won't be moving forward with this plan, but I hope that it will soon. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the member of this council who lives closest to the area we're talking about, as a matter of fact, I, well, I moved into South Roanoke as far as I was allowed to come. It's the very first residential property when you come across the river. But I, I actually can walk and often do walk when I have an appointment down at the Crystal Spring Building for their imaging or lab or whatever, and also walk down there to, to catch the trolley on occasion. And I, I wanted to get clarification on the plans at this point for Crystal Spring between McClanahan and Evans Mill. What's going to happen with Chris, if somebody could come back up to the?
Mr. Burns or whoever the representative?
My name is Sean Horn. I'm with Ballzer and Associates. We're the architects and engineers working with Carillion. So, the plan for Crystal Spring right now, it has been vacated, so it is Carillion property. However, it is not being closed at this time. So, before it were to be closed, if it would be filled in with another building as originally proposed, that would have to come back for another plan amendment. There's nothing indicated on this current plan that it would be closed off. So, currently, it's a throughway for traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists. It actually gives better bicycle accommodation than our previous plan to get through to the Greenway Connector. To address one of the comments about the pedestrian connections, some of what was asked for is actually already in the plan. So, we do have on Evans Mill as part of this plan, as part of what was originally proffered with the plan, if you will, put as conditions, was additional sidewalks on Evans Mill as well to make that connection. So, I just wanted that to be said.
Well, thank you. So, coming out of the parking garage onto McClanahan and right turn only, will people be able to turn in on Crystal Spring? Will vehicle traffic still be there?
Correct.
So, they can just circle around if they want to go further south down Jefferson or wherever?
Yes, sir. That is correct. And the, and the right end, just to be clear, the right in, right out onto McClanahan is still not a guaranteed item. That still has to get city approval and additional study done on that. But the full access will be on Crystal Spring.
Well, thank you. And, and as, as somebody who does walk in that area quite a lot, I certainly appreciate everything that you can do. I agree with the need for more sidewalks and more crosswalks and maybe even some crosswalk signs, especially at the, and this is not, this is not Carillion's issue, but since we're talking about it, at the intersection of Broadway Avenue and McClanahan, which is very tricky and very confusing, I think, for people who are not really familiar with that area. So, I hope that, I hope that that can be something that this council will encourage the administration to work on as well. I am disappointed, as others have said, about postponement of anything having to do with the mental health services. I did want to point out that we just received the 2021 report to the community from Carillion, and part of it talks about the 2021 assessment, the triennial community health assessments. And it says, I can get this over here, "Our 2021 assessments identified our community's top health concerns as mental health, health behaviors, and socioeconomic factors such as income, housing, and transportation." They put mental health right at the top of that list, and I appreciate that because it, it tells me that this is not something that's going to be forgotten. This is something that will still come. And certainly, we know that the future success of our economy depends largely on what happens with Carillion Clinic, the medical school, and the research institute, and all the other things that are going to be associated with that as time goes on up and down the innovation corridor. So, I appreciate seeing this. Mental health hasn't been pushed off. It's been pushed back a little bit, but I agree with, with the Vice Mayor that I think we can be confident that as time and circumstances allow, we will see a top-notch medical center facility, a hospital for behavioral health. And I really appreciate that as part of the plan going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any comment from anybody else on council? Ms. Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I want to thank Carillion for all the effort you went to to communicate with the neighbors. I think it's, your model of communication was important and helpful, and really a, a template for how organizations can engage and should engage neighborhoods with, with developments of this scale. I'm curious to know from the city perspective, you know, what, what if any plans are currently in place or thoughts are in place to enhance pedestrian safety, vehicle safety in these cor- corridors where this construction is taking place? It'd be helpful for me to understand kind of where we are or what's being discussed. And, and I'm also thinking about, though we don't have it often, just a few years ago, we had a pretty significant flooding incident at, at Lower McClanahan, right there at Franklin and McClanahan. And if we're going to have increased traffic, I'm also concerned about flood mitigation and, and what, I know some of that's being addressed with the demolition of the Ramada and work that's going on there, but is, is there anyone from planning or transportation that, that might be able to give any insights into where we are in looking at some of those issues? Or, yeah, and I'll also add, if, if you need to like come back with more information in another meeting, I totally understand that too.
Please, ship, everybody, for the record, please state your name.
My name is Holmwood. I'm with the City Roanoke Transportation Division. I'm the traffic engineer. And the, as far as improve pedestrians in at the Carrion, Jefferson, McClanahan area, we have, I'm currently actually working with Carrion's at the McClanahan and Broadway. You know, there's crosswalk, marked crosswalk, we're looking and puts, push the, to get a device, you know, probably y'all seen it, you had to push button to activate the warning signs to warning the, the drivers or somebody is ready to cross. If you want what's look like is what we've done, we have one at Williamson Road and Bull, but the Bullet, where that the, the Elmwood Park, you know, that, that's what the device looked like. That's those that, if nobody there, so it would not flash when it's pedestrian, push the button to activate it. Yeah. So, and also we have put in a touchless button at the intersection Jefferson and McClanahan and with the audible to, you know, during the COVID-19, so we added all the hospital, the intersection with the touchless button, so you just wave the button or you can push as well and to provide the safety. And the, we also work with the Carrion's trying to improve that intersection with the Jefferson and the Willer. And then when to the project, we're going to add additional crosswalk process that a emergency entrance is in the work. So that's, we have been doing as far as working with the Carrion's engineers, their contractors, and to provide the area safety during the construction. And also afterwards, we've had to evaluate the projects complete to improve the pedestrian safety, especially in the neighborhood areas. Thank you.
All right. Hold on, Mr. Bestbidge. Mr. Cobb, you still got the floor or you got?
Yeah, I just, is there anybody else that wanted to respond to that? And then I have, I just have one more question I'd like to raise.
Good evening. Gillian Papa-More, Acting Planning Director for the Record. Just wanted to address the question more from a policy and procedural question or perspective. What the, the planning office does is we coordinate and look at these pedestrian improvements and possibilities for improved pedestrian safety on a development level. So there's an incremental approach to looking at improvements to pedestrian's safety for each and every site plan that comes through our department. And that is reviewed by subject matter expert like Mr. Lou that just spoke and addressed council. So that will be done on this project and other projects within the area with many of the principles described by this, the, the speaker that addressed council this evening.
Thank you.
Catherine Gray, Planner with the City of Roanoke. And we do look at pedestrian access, we look at bicycle access, and we look at vehicular access as all important for any of the resounding projects that come before us. And this, this planned unit development plan back in 2019 addressed a lot of those things. What we're seeing here tonight is really a minor amendment to that 2019 plan that was approved. And it's really moving the two buildings, the Behavioral Health Building, that was going to be a new building on the corner, and the parking garage that was going to be internal. And it's revamping the existing Behavioral Health Building and having a new parking garage. That's really the change that we're talking about here tonight. And so all of the things that we talked about before, about the pedestrian access, about the bicycle access, and about the vehicular access, all of those remain in the plan.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for that clarification. The, the other thing I was curious about that Ms. Dirk raised was the dedicated entrance from 581. And I, I cannot imagine that that is an easy process. But I am curious because, not only because of the investment that Carrion has made in our city, but the regional investment. And I'm curious what process we might undertake to pursue this as a smart-scale project with a, you know, as one of the transportation priorities. That's not something necessarily that might happen immediately, but it's something we could plan for. And, and I know that the Regional Commission and all of the participating localities have to approve those priorities, but I, I think, I think it's worth giving it some thought and seeing how we might approach that and what the viability for something like that could be.
I just wanted to agree with you and concur that it's not something that would be likely manageable during a site plan review process.
I had some preliminary discussions about modifying 220 and 581 to provide a direct access to Carrion. There was a study done around six months ago when, before Mark Jamison, our Public Works Director retired, and those discussions were preliminary. And we received some information regarding that about four months ago. And so it's, those conversations have been going on. They've just been discreetly going on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And let me just, because I felt I mentioned this earlier, that Clarence Greer is the Deputy City Manager sitting in for Bob Cowley today. All right, Mr. Bestbidge.
Well, just, just to be completely accurate, I, I think we need to remember that 581 ends at Elm Avenue. And when you go on from there, you call it 220, you can call it Royd Webber Expressway, but there's no way to put an access from 581 to Carrion. And I don't think that's what anybody's talking about or anybody wants anyway, so. But I just wanted to say in response to some of Mr. Lou's comments that one of the things that, I don't know how quickly this could be done, but there's a crosswalk across McClanahan from the south side over to the north side, close to Carolina Avenue that comes out there right by Sweet Donkey. There is no crosswalk across the end of Broadway. There's no markings for a crosswalk there. Again, I know that because I dodge and dip and watch very carefully going across that to go back up Broadway to, to my residence. So I, I really think that should be a, a top priority. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay. Let me just say that I concur with many of the comments my colleagues have made tonight regarding Carrion and their partnership. They have had a steadfast partnership with this city. And so I'm going to vote to support this ordinance. And, and as we stated earlier by the Vice Mayor and other that, they were real concerned with mental health, but that's, that's something that we can leave up to Carrion in terms of how they manage that part of it. But I'm always willing to do what we can to support Carrion and the medical center there to, to really make changes and to, to really make the way of life in this city something special. So I will do that. All right, Madam Clerk, may call a little, please.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbidge.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the ordinance passes. All right. All right, that concludes now. We're going down to the hearing of citizens. That's the next thing on the agenda. Do we have any citizens that have signed up?
We do. We have two.
All right.
Laura Hartman and Ken MacLeod.
If your name's being called, please come up.
Am I going first, Karen? I'm going first. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Laura Hartman. I live in Roanoke City. I'm here as a member of BRAG, which stands for Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. And we are, first of all, coming to deliver a thank you note to Councilmember Joe Cobb and his colleagues for listening to our concerns over the last few months. We're very excited about some recent moves toward more transit options for our citizens. We really appreciate your hearing us and we appreciate your support, and we look forward to working together in the future to make the bus system better.
Excuse me, what group do you represent here?
Yes, sir. This is BRAG, Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. I've got a couple of other members of BRAG here with me tonight.
Oh, okay.
We're a pretty new group.
Yeah.
You might not have heard of us. You're welcome to our meetings. I was going to end with an invitation, but I'll put it right, right now. Everyone is invited to our next meeting, which is September 1st, Thursday, September 1st, at 5:30 PM in the Gainesboro Library. And everyone is welcome to discuss how to make the bus system better. We believe this is a wonderful city that deserves wonderful transit. I also wanted to bring to your attention an issue that we've been talking about in our group recently, which is the lack of staffing at Valley Metro. They have so few drivers right now, they have had to cut Saturday service in half. Some of our members have to wait two hours for a bus on Saturday, which we think is unacceptable. And the reason given for this is because there are not enough drivers. Now, I know there's a lack of staffing in every sector. Everybody is experiencing such things. However, the lack of drivers is leading to a lack of bus service, and that makes all the other staffing problems worse. Buses are an essential lifeline for workers to get to their jobs. Just recently, I was on the bus and I saw someone wearing medical scrubs. And right next to them was someone wearing a uniform for a fast food restaurant. And right next to them was someone wearing one of those neon vests that you wear when you work construction. These are the people who rely on the bus, and they are the ones who keep our city going. But without sufficient bus service, everybody suffers. Restaurant workers, hotel workers, hospital workers, factory workers, daycare workers, post office workers, retail workers, the list goes on and on. Without sufficient transit service, our essential workers cannot get to work, and this epidemic of insufficient staffing gets worse and worse. Valley Metro assures us that they are working on recruiting more bus drivers. I want to encourage all of y'all to get on a bus, ride the bus, and talk to your drivers about what they think would help recruit more drivers. How would their jobs be improved? For my part, I believe our drivers should be paid more. The starting pay for bus drivers in Charlottesville is $17 an hour. In Asheville, North Carolina, it's $18.75 an hour. Guess how much our starting drivers get paid? Less than $15 an hour. These are professionals who hold our lives in their hands. They deserve adequate pay. We are a great city and we deserve great transit. Public transit is a public good. It's vital to reaching our full potential as individuals and as a community. I want to encourage all of y'all to pay attention to our buses, ride the buses, support them in any way that you can. I, I was doing a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation as part of listening in on, on the conversations. And, well, first of all, I want y'all to know that Carrion's most recent community health assessment listed lack of access to transit as the number three health problem in this area, because people need to access the healthcare. And if, if they have an insufficient bus service, they can't do that, right? This really gets in the way. But secondly, I was calculating, if we were to have a new interchange, you know how much money those cost? Those are really expensive, okay? A new interchange off the highway, that amount of money could pay for quadruple the number of buses for 10 years. I'm serious. So yes, parking is important, cars are important, but so are the buses. So are the people who ride the buses. These are our neighbors, these are our citizens, and they deserve our attention and our care. You are all invited to the next BRAG meeting, Thursday, September 1st, 5:30 PM at the Gainesboro Library. And finally, I just want to say buses are, or they should be, for everyone. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Got the money? I'll get you. I don't have the money to do this.
Let's go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Ken MacLeod. I live off Winona Avenue in Southwest Roanoke and love everything Laura just said. Members of City Council, Mayor Lee, thank you for listening to me today. I want to let you know about the importance of improving traffic safety in Roanoke and new funding that is available through historic federal investments in transportation. In the City of Roanoke, 45 people were killed in traffic violence between 2016 and 2020. On a per capita basis, the City of Roanoke averages more traffic deaths per year than Roanoke County and is twice as dangerous as the City of Salem. Government agencies typically value a human life at about $10 million, meaning that the cost of traffic deaths in the City of Roanoke was about $450 million in the last five years that data is available for. Compared to that cost, which does not include injuries, property damage, congestion, and other costs of traffic violence, investments in improving traffic safety are very modest. The bipartisan infrastructure law passed last year and the recently enacted Inflation Reduction Act provide many opportunities for the city to address traffic safety and other transportation issues. I want to encourage you as leaders to take every action to pursue those opportunities and express your support for grant applications that can save and improve lives. The first opportunity that I want to highlight tonight is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program. This is a new program that supports planning and projects that improve traffic safety for communities committed to dramatically reducing traffic deaths, ultimately with the goal of zero traffic deaths. Every year for the next five years, $1 billion will be available through this program. For a city like Roanoke, the first step is a planning grant, which can be between $200,000 and $1 million. Applications for that program are due September 15th, so the time to act is now. The second opportunity that I want to bring to your attention is the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program, which makes $1 billion available over the next five years to retrofit or mitigate barriers to community connectivity like 581. Barriers in Roanoke are 581, rail lines, Orange Avenue, and other major arterial roadways that are difficult to bike and walk across. This pilot program is meant to address past actions that divided communities along economic and racial lines and provides an opportunity for Roanoke to address its past wrongs and further its commitment to interwoven equity. Applications for that program are due October 13th. A third opportunity is the Neighborhood Access and Equity Grant Program, recently adopted in the Inflation Reduction Act, which makes $3 billion available over the next five years to improve walkability, safety, affordable transportation access, and disadvantaged or underserved communities. This is another great opportunity to further address Roanoke's commitment to interwoven equity. Application dates for that program have not yet been announced. There are many other discretionary federal grant programs that the city should take advantage of in the coming years. Now is a unique time to act on the city's commitment to interwoven equity and a livable built environment found in the recently adopted 2040 Plan. As a resident of Roanoke and Chair of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission's Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, I look forward to working with you to improve transportation safety and equity in the City of Roanoke. Thanks.
Let me say before you go, sir, that I appreciate you coming forward, but when you start quoting a lot of data, I want to vet that because, first of all, you, when you compare Roanoke to Salem, it's totally different entities and a lot of things involved there. But some of those numbers and things, I, I'd like to see that the data that you quoted in terms of deaths and how many and what's going on in those other areas.
I, I would be happy to provide you that data. I, I used per capita data, so I looked up the population of Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and the City of Salem, and I looked at the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's fatality data for 2016 to 2020, and I used those two data sources to calculate a per capita basis.
Okay. Well, I, I look forward to seeing that data.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I, I look forward to seeing that data. Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Yeah, I just wondered if you could send the links to those grants?
Uh, yes, absolutely. That would be helpful.
Is somebody down there? Ms. Price?
Yeah. Have we applied for those?
Our Transit, well, Works Division, Global Transportation, we had a meeting last Friday to evaluate all the Infrastructure Act grants and Inflation Act grants that would be applicable, and we're going to be applying for them.
I, I know you all are always on top of that, so I just wanted to make sure that, that our listening residents knew that we, we do try to stay on top of that. But I certainly appreciate you bringing that information. But we have a pretty good team that, that tries to look at those grants. Yeah.
Ms. Price, I don't know if you want this gentleman or you want-
I just want to make a quick comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hartman for being here tonight and to talk about BRAG and bringing the other advocates. See, Mr. Cook is with you as well. And I just wanted to commend you on the information and the communication that you send out, because I have signed up for your email listing, and I have found it very helpful. And I'm not sure if you, in your comments, if you gave how to, to access and sign up for your newsletter. Well, it's not really a newsletter, but it's just to, to join that email listing. Because I will say this, they, they do give a great deal of information. I just wanted to publicly thank you and all of you for being so strong advocates for our transportation system, because you're absolutely right. It's up to all of us to promote and, and encourage everybody to, to, to try Valley Metro.
Thank you, Ms. Price. So we can be contacted at our email address, which is busridersofroanoke@gmail.com. That's busridersofroanoke@gmail.com, or you can find us on Facebook.
Yes, thank you, because I had never heard of it.
All right. Anybody else? Any more speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. And if there's no further information, I'll make sure I'm not missing anything. All right. Being there, no further business to come before the council, the council meeting adjourned. Thank you.